And we are live on Facebook Live, facebook.com/mountvernonny and for the June 22 city council committee meeting here at City Hall. We have two scheduled and one in attendance so far. Director Debbie Burrell Butler from the Youth Bureau. That she is going to be calling in as well. I don't think he can hear you. Let me take you off mute. I got you. I got you. Right now, there you are.
Mr. Fields, how you doing? I need to take Mr. Fields.
Got it. How are you, sir?
Mr. Fields, how you doing? You good?
I'm awesome. Thank you so much for having me.
Great. You may proceed.
All right, I'll share my screen if that's okay.
Yep.
Do you have requests to share your screen, sir?
Yes.
Is he on mute?
No, Justin wants to. Can you hear?
Facebook for the June 10. Go ahead, sir. Let's see if I can get you. I'm trying to give you the privileges there and I'm having low issues here. See if you can request on your side if you have a button that would send a request and it will come over to me.
I've been hitting it a few times.
Mm hmm. You're hitting it. Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Yes, absolutely. I just hit the request.
Yeah, hit the request and see if I can, if it comes through to me because right now I don't have a, an option to give you. Let's see.
Not yet. Sending. Yeah.
Coming through. Hmm, haven't got it. See.
Yeah.
If not, and apologize for the difficulty right now, but I'm still unable to give you more of that control. Let's see. I'm not sure if it's the link for our streaming link. It shouldn't be. I'm not able to share this screen. Let me try again.
They're saying this disables by the whole.
Yeah, yeah, I don't have it. And so I apologize. If you want to, you can, if you have a file to send me and I can launch it.
Okay.
We can do that that way. I, I don't recall disabling the shared screen option, but I don't have it right now. That's for sure. Let's see, I tried to relaunch my Outlook because we were just talking about me not having, and it may be, I don't think it's the internet here, but. I just got my last email in at 6:34. Let's see if I could refresh again and pick up what you just sent. Were you trying to, was it the mask, the visual that we had of the mask? This image here?
No, it's actually.
Something in addition to the whole thing. Okay. And if it was that initial piece that showed the artist inception of the dining, outdoor dining, could that be it also? Because I may, either way, I may not have.
Send to the document.
Okay, let me see if I can get that now.
Okay.
I have it now.
So I basically wanted to take a minute to walk through the phases to bring you up to speed as to where we are now.
So in the meantime, Mr. Fields, can you just begin to talk to what we're going to see? I think we might have seen all this in our packets. And if you describe it well, us as council members who know the city can follow along.
Okay, we'll do.
And you should be able to see my screen now with your titles, your title slide of phase three.
Yes. And I'll just move through it and you can move with me. So tomorrow begins, what is being known as phase three for our area. New York seems to be the lead in phase reopening, you know, as it seems, but I just wanted to go quick review of the phases so that we can give some context and understand exactly what that opening means for us. So when you look at the phases, the phases were developed with some factors in mind. It's frequency of use, which is how often businesses are used, rate of transmission, how fast people can contract and characteristics of containment, which is the response to that. Now, when you put all of that together, when you bring all of that together, that's how the phases were developed. When you look at the phases, they're comprised of two components, that's industry areas along with the percentage of service allowed to operate within that area. Just wait for it to catch up.
I'm on page two. If that works for you, you can just guide me and I, I can.
I'm just, it doesn't have to happen in real time. It's cool. So I want to go back to the different phases so that we understand exactly how they pertain to Mount Vernon. So phase one, we saw construction, manufacturing, curbside, in-store retail and pickup, which our area demographically is heavily known for those areas. Other industries within phase one did not really pertain to us as much. So we have forestry, commercial fishing, wholesale trading, agriculture, not really, not really our area. We were more so construction, manufacturing, curbside, in-store, retail and pickup. Phase two, we have professional services. I have financial agents, insurance agents, administrative support. We had in-store retail, real estate agents, sales and leasing, hair salons and barber shops, which are key. Those are personal care industries. We had outdoor dining, places of worship functioning at 25% capacity with distancing. Now, phase three, which is critical and set to begin tomorrow, will offer us dining restaurants at 50% capacity. Again, with distance and food services, personal care services, additional personal care services, which will include aside from barber shops and hair salons, spas and nail salons, tattoo parlors, massage therapists, pretty much, that pretty much describes our area. And we have low-risk youth sports gatherings now from 10 up to 25 people. Also included in that phase to begin tomorrow would be public hotels, which would not really pertain to us, but with definitely personal care. Phase four, a little down the road, expected to convene July 7 would include education.
Give me the direction. I can.
Okay.
Would you like me to, would you like me to change the pages or give me some directions, sir?
Okay.
You want me to, we're in phase three.
Jump down, let's jump down to phase four. Where we have education, recreation, entertainment and the arts. That's for July 7. That's just a recap of the phases as they're related to Mount Vernon and we're moving on. So in between each phase, there's a two-week buffer period. That's a monitoring period at which we're responsible for maintaining and decreasing hospitalizations, infection rates and deaths. This is the time that we have to make sure that these do not spike or else we have, it'll take us in a reverse motion. Now let's take a look at the four phases with dates. Because then that'll show the two-week periods. We have phase one, phase two, phase three to begin tomorrow and phase four. And this is again, just to give context, so we're all on the same page. We're moving on. So now as we entered into phase two, and this is very important, this is critical, non-essential businesses that were allowed to resume in that phase for construction, as we said, and they would do so with safety equipment and temperature checks required. Manufacturers, moving on to non-essential retail stores. So we had essential stores that were open. Now we have non-essential stores that would open in phase two for delivery and they would open up a curbside and in-store pickup. Add it to that would be wholesalers. Phase two also gave opportunity for outdoor businesses like landscaping and gardening. We're moving on just to clearly define, further define phase two and how it unfolded. A lot of the businesses that were in phase one and some that were in phase two were already open as essential businesses. So they were operating during the shutdown orders. Restaurants and bars, they were allowed to offer takeout and delivery all throughout the pandemic. So technically they were open. We're moving on. So a few other things that we need to know by this point. Veterinarians, dentists are open now. They should be open. Hospitals and group homes, and this is all specific to our area and it pertains to our opening. Hospitals and group homes, not nursing homes, can accept visitors at their discretion as long as they have the proper health precautions in place. State parks, if you're traveling, campgrounds, they're open, boatyards open. Beaches, state beaches are open with restrictions, of course. Those of us who are school vendors, graduations of up to 150 people with social distancing, they will be allowed beginning in June 26. Also in this phase, it was given in anticipation, but some of the camps may open June 29. So we're moving on. As we enter into phase three tomorrow, we expect then gatherings to go from 10 people to 25 people. This is critical for us indoor dining at restaurants with up to 50% capacity and table space at least six feet away from each other. And we'll get into this a little later as to why this is a concern specifically for our area. See, then bar areas, they are permitted, but only six feet of distance can be maintained between parties. That's as we enter into phase three starting tomorrow. So now what do we expect? We're moving on. As we enter into phase three, it's pretty much just an extension of phase two. So we have personal care services, nail salons specifically, spa services and tennis salons. I don't think we have a tennis salon. But definitely nail salons, massage parlors and spa services. Those are set to open tomorrow. In addition to that, we also have some low-risk youth sports that can begin July 6. So this was a little further down the line for us. We do have some event venues, large gatherings and they can look forward to phase four. Our gyms, which we also have in fitness centers, also to be included in phase four. For those of you, us who like to frequent the casino, Empire will be open and they fall into phase four. Movie theaters, phase four amusement parks, again, don't directly pertain to us, but they're definitely on the outskirts of our city and we do frequent them. We're moving on. So this is the crux of it. Again, wanted to go over a few things just to build context so that we understand as Mount Vernon, where we are. If you know Mount Vernon, you know that personal care barber shops, hair salons, restaurants and discount convenience. We're heavily saturated in those areas. So now what does that mean for us? Tomorrow, as we enter into phase three, we'll still find ourselves working in and on phase two. Personal care opened up in phase two with barber shops and hair salons. We're adding more personal care industries and businesses to phase three. Nail salons, tattoo parlors, spa services, indoor dining. If and when the space permits. So again, I want to reiterate that as we enter into phase three, we're going to feel like we're kind of still in phase two. Why? Because phase two had a good chunk of personal care businesses that opened up and phase three is just an extension of the same. Phase three pretty much consisted of personal care and food services. Those are our barber shops, still nail salons, mixed with additional opportunities for our restaurants to dine indoor, if they have the space to do so.
Is everybody following okay? Is everybody okay with, okay. I think you could speed up a little bit.
Okay, cool beans. So I want to jump down to what we gain in phase three. Indoor dining with limited capacity of the safety precautions. That's what we gain. We gain nail salons, tattoo parlors and spas. I'll summarize. Again, this is going to be an extension of phase two. We're not going to see a significant difference. We can expect nail salons to open up, which after walking through the city, there were quite a few doors closed and quite a few who were preparing to open up tomorrow. What does this mean for Mount Vernon? It means businesses are still implementing protocols throughout phase two. As we were walking around just last week, you know, somebody who, we had a business who opened up just last Friday from beginning of phase two. So businesses, they're still, you know, taking their time because they're finding their PPE, they're getting their testing together and they're disinfecting protocols in place. They're getting their staffing back together if that applies, or they're contemplating if the percentages, which the which are in place even are worth it. And that's why you may see some of the doors still, still closed. They're preparing. And so I'm contemplating whether or not it's worth it to open at this time. So what does that mean? That means if you have a restaurant that does not have the space for 50%, they're going to just, they're just going to wait it out. I'm moving on. This is just a very self-assessment of a walkthrough of Fleetwood. Elevate, elevation dental. We're looking forward to seeing you. A few highlighted in the pink is what's not open yet. This can change as early as tomorrow. Nail City. Fancy Feet Dance Studio. All of this set to open phase three. Grand Nail Salon, Nail Spa. Again, this is just soft information, the nail bar, all of these set to open tomorrow.
Again, I think, I think we got it.
Okay, cool beans. I'm going down Fourth Avenue. I'll just show you. A lot of this, not to be mistaken with the closures, some of the, some of these spaces were vacated prior to that. Again, just to be clear about where we are. Soft Loft Spa, there are some, also some nail salons, some additional personal care businesses along Fourth Avenue, as we know, that are waiting to open, but will open as early as tomorrow. Race Nails, I'm all the way down. Other areas, they fell within essential businesses as they were restaurants along Sanford Boulevard, Third Street, Lincoln Avenue and Columbus. So businesses were not shut down completely within those areas. I'm going all the way down. We work directly with the Chamber of Commerce. We work directly with the SBDC powered by the SBA to provide and disseminate information to businesses. Onto the next slide. We want them, everyone to know that there is still money available. Just reported about 10 days ago, there's $130 billion for small businesses and there are so many different opportunities. At this point, we have New York Forward, that loan fund. Money's still available there and then we also have grants that will be available at the Chamber of Commerce website if you need it. We have about one or two concerns and then recommendations for those concerns, which you were forwarded already. So one concern is there are complexities with challenges related to creativity. Businesses just cannot become creative because they can't change the amount of space that they're given within their businesses. That's one concern. The other one is related to communication. One recommendation to speak to that is we feel that the city has access to opportunities that can ease efforts and kind of stimulate our local economy. The big thing is space. That's the issue. Next phase. Next slide. One of the recommendations, and you have this already on your end, is we looked at clusters of restaurants. All of the areas don't meet this criteria as it would not benefit like the restaurants within the area. They would either have to walk too far or we would not be able to maintain traffic or divert it easily. But on Ramton Avenue, between Broad and Grand, there is an opportunity there for the eateries to dine outdoors if we can recreate the space. And we feel that the city can make this easy for businesses as opposed to waiting for them to get together to kind of apply for it or submit a permit for it. We think it's a pretty easy accommodation. And I feel that, you know, the businesses would jump on it, the restaurants would jump on it themselves. Also, along Sanford Boulevard, where the cross street is Colonial Place, between Flaming Grill and Ice Cream Factory, there is also a street there that if traffic were diverted, you know, we would not, it would not cause much disruption. There's also space and opportunity there for restaurants to create an outside dining space.
Okay, is that all you have?
I want to move down to this initiative. Because one, with everybody letting up, we, we really need to consider an initiative that involves masks or giving out masks or promoting the use of masks so that we can keep our numbers down. So we came up with masks for Mount Vernon. And we think that would be a great initiative as well. And there's some more information on it that I've emailed. And there's also some information in there regarding a report as of June 18. Active cases only dropping by rate of 52. And that's only one event. One event can spike that and cause us to go in the opposite direction. So I think our message at this time is very, very, very important as we encourage people to continue to wear masks and more so promote it. Provide masks. Okay, and I'm almost done. At the end, there are important sites for everyone to take a look at. I'll post them on the Chamber of Commerce website, www.mbcny.net. The CDC website, www.cdc.gov. Our own city website, www.cmvny.com. And that's it.
Okay, is there any questions in the council?
No questions for the council. I do want to know the likelihood.
Were there any questions for you from the council?
Okay.
No. I have President Protem.
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for your presentation. I didn't get your name.
Omar Fields.
Omar, nice to meet you, Omar. So this is great. I think that the idea of encouraging outdoor eating space is, is a great idea. It's something that I pitched a couple of weeks ago, you know, because many municipalities are doing it. And I think that we can make a go of it here in Mount Vernon. So it's good to see that the the chamber is, you know, pushing this idea. I'm all for it. I think we need to do whatever we can to to support our local businesses particularly and, and to encourage people to, you know, to come and spend time with us. One of the things I suggested when I talked about it a few weeks ago was really putting together a comprehensive campaign. was really putting together a comprehensive campaign to pitch Mount Vernon as a, I mean, a diverse, very unique eating destination. Because we have so many ethnic restaurants. And so it's an opportunity to really participate in, you know, in the wide array of, you know, cuisines that, that are here. So really putting together a comprehensive campaign to pitch it as an outdoor dining experience in Mount Vernon. That's equal to no other.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fields, for that presentation. I have a question regarding the phases. Are inspections being conducted to ensure that people are following the guidelines through each phase?
I'll have more information on that. I know that there has been a task force launch. We don't have much information as of yet on the task force or when they are out or what the qualifications or the requirements are. I would think there are inspections being done. I just don't have details.
I don't know if that would be at the city level.
Yeah, I think it was, right? The task force was launched by the city.
Yes, absolutely. That's what I was told. I have a meeting pending and now waiting to get information regarding it.
Okay. So with regards to the businesses, have you had an opportunity? I know you did sort of a soft survey and you walked through the neighborhoods to see who's actually open, who's not. But have you reached out to them and had any discussions as to things that they would like to see in terms of the outdoor availability and accessibility?
They are discharged at the possibility of it happening. If there's any way that we can expedite it as it relates to the permits, that seems to be on everybody's list right now, just making it happen. Because they're still, again, getting PPE together, getting staff together. So I'm just trying to work with them in order to expedite it.
Okay, so I've, I have, I think it's a great idea. And, you know, looking at what some of the other municipalities are doing around us. For instance, you know, in terms of making things easier, Yonkers Mayor did lift a lot of the regulations around outdoor dining and sidewalk cafes for that, to facilitate that, making it easier. We do have an application, which I'm, I'd like to review with my, with my co-chair and also with the council. See where we can simplify it and make it easier. But all the while, they need to still follow CDC regulations and this social distancing, like you said, there are guidelines with each phase. In, in other municipalities, they're allowing the sidewalk cafe to extend into the parking space on the street parking.
That is always a challenge for us. Parking any normal day has been a challenge for us. And it's just a little dicey trying to chop into the parking space and it may interfere also. So while we're providing more space for people to dine and eat, we're cutting away the parking, which is going to make it, you know, just counterproductive.
I mean, we have to, we have to weigh it out. Even the street closures would be taking away parking. So we'd have to balance that out. And Yonkers, what they're allowing, to the extent that there are parking lots near adjacent to some of these establishments, they're allowing them to use that space as well for outdoor dining. So I just think that in terms of the clusters that you've identified, if we can take a look at those and see what the area around them, so that we can really get a sense of what would be the easiest way to give them the outdoor space that they, they need. One of the, one thing I just want to be cognizant of is also, especially with street closures. It does take resources. It does take resources from our police department. It does take resources from other departments. I just want to be cognizant of that, make sure that we involve those departments in our discussions as we look to make this easier and more accessible.
If we do not, if we don't do it for consecutive days throughout the week, maybe on a Saturday, something, you know, there are options. More of a festival-like, something that they could just look forward to.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Ray Thompson, you will, and you will also be joined by our mayor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Fields, for your presentation. I would, I was going to say, let's consider something that, that Chicago did long before the pandemic. They had something called the Taste of Chicago. So if we did something like the Taste of Mount Vernon, where we allowed people in the community to come in and taste these foods that Mount Vernon has to offer. But when we do this, we also have to look into suspending alternative side of street parking, suspend, you know, all parking regulations. If it's for that day or for that week, whenever we're trying to put this together. So we're, we're also looking out for the business owners as well as the residents who want to participate in spending their mon, spending their funds with these businesses. So I think that would help out a lot on both ends. So we need to visit how we can put that into play. And I'm glad the mayor is here because, you know, she can help us out with that. But, you know, that would be a great thing for us to just go ahead and, and get that rolling. So, you know, the businesses will do well and the residents can approve.
I'm just coming in to visit. So we are, we are prepared for phase three reopening tomorrow. We are working with New York Forward, Lehman College, Small Business Development Center, Truland, New York State Empire Development Corporation, and, and now the chamber recently to really make sure that we are providing support. We did a webinar last Tuesday on New York Forward for about 50 of our businesses here in Mount Vernon. We have a second webinar that we will be doing in conjunction with the Small Business Development Association at Lehman College and some of our other partners to focus on the restaurants and providing support to the restaurants. And then we will be doing a third one to provide support with the personal care businesses. So we know that a lot of our small businesses here in Mount Vernon are restaurants and personal care like nail salons, hair, hair salons, barber shops, hair braiding shops, tattooing, massage parlors, and businesses like that. The first one was just a general business webinar to really provide support to the small businesses. I believe I had stated before that we received monies through COVID response through HUD. And we will have available come hopefully August, no later than September, about a quarter of a million dollars to provide small business development support, financial support. But until then, we have already connected and will continue to connect our businesses with the New York Forward Fund and about six agencies that are already funded through the state of New York to provide technical assistance to help these small businesses here in Mount Vernon access the New York Forward Funds as well as the federal funds. So this is something that we're constantly doing. The Small Business Task Force and the reopening task force, the resilience task force has been going, you know, store to store, working with our businesses, speaking to our businesses about what they have to do. Each of them have to submit a health form to the state of New York around a reopening safety plan. So we've been having them do that. But then we also know here in Mount Vernon, not as much restaurants, but some of the personal care businesses and retail shops are businesses that have opened. They don't necessarily have a certificate of occupancy. They don't have a certificate of tenancy. They may or may not have certain licenses and regulations, and they may or may not be paying taxes. And so we're going through all of those to make sure that all of the businesses that are doing business here in Mount Vernon are not only following the COVID regulations, but they are in lockstep with everything that they're supposed to do for the city of Mount Vernon, especially paying taxes. We, we cannot continue to have businesses that are here that are not registered with the state comptroller's office and that are doing business kind of under the radar. So we're using this as an opportunity to just do a full reset in our business community and work and provide that technical assistance that the businesses need to not only reopen properly, but make sure that they are in compliance with state and local regulations.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Fields, for staying here. You know, you need from us. You're more than welcome to reach back out. You know, we want to be a partner with the Chamber of Commerce. Getting the information from you guys is critical to feel the different heartbeat than we have here in City Hall. So we thank you for your continued work.
Thank you all for your cooperation and thank you all for your support.
Thank you. Ms. Mayor, please stay on. We're going to have Ms. Burrell on to talk to us as well. I'm sure you know everything she has to say, but Mr. Clerk, are you ready for Mrs. Burrell to come on? Perfect.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Perfectly.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, we can.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for having me. And I'm here today to talk about the Mount Vernon first ever so given COVID, this year we decided to think outside of the box and thinking outside of the box and still providing employment opportunity for our youth ages 13 to 24. It looks a lot different than it has
We have a little loss of her line.
So, hold on.
Yes. Right.
And you'll hear her. Six weeks and pay them hourly wages.
Debbie.
Yes.
Yes.
Your signal upstairs is not really good. If you want to run downstairs and do this presentation from my computer, because
Well, no, I actually just got home. I just got home and I'm going to go on the deck. So that was my computer room, so let's see.
Or Director Butler, if you like, you can dial, or you can just dial in also. You can leave the video and you can dial in. And then we can put one on mute and then we can hear your audio. That might also assist.
That probably present, okay. All right, give me one second. Let me do that. All right.
And the dial-in is just below the, the, the video link in, in the material ad section.
Okay.
That sounds better right there.
I'm, I'm better right now?
Yes, you are.
All right, so we have this meeting. Like, where am I? Okay, and wait, let me just see if any better outside. I'm outside.
There you go. There you go.
Okay, all right, all right. So, all right, we're outside. All right. So let me start over. And so now we're doing, we're thinking outside of the box. So we're doing virtual youth employment for six weeks. We're starting July 6th. We're ending August 14th. Rather than the four or five hours per day, youth will be asked to join on Zoom, three to four hours per day. They're just, they just completed their interview via virtual through Zoom. And originally, when we started this virtual, I had a goal of 125 youth. And we're at 129. So not only we met our goal, but we superseded that expectation and we met our goal. The six weeks, we have each week a different theme. For example, we have on-the-job and volunteerism. We have getting paid and resume cover letter, building up, following up, and thank you letter. So those are just the themes. I just mentioned only three. We have an in-depth, each-day curriculum. They will sign in. We have two sessions per day. We have a nine to 12 with a break between 12 and one, and then we have a one to four. The reason for that is because we are aware or we heard that the school district will be having summer school. So we wanted to still give those youth who had to go to summer school, will have to go to summer school, will have the opportunity to still get this employment training and still earn a stipend. The stipend depending on, we have three different virtual programs this summer. Our GEM program, our step-up program, and our overall program. So depending on the program that they selected and return the application for, their stipend will be anywhere from 250 to 600. The, the stipend for the step-up is 250, for GEM is 350. And the regular stipend for the other population, which is the older group, is 600. Now, we're not just giving out stipends to anyone who decided, hey, I want to just come on today or tomorrow and don't come on for the rest of the week. It's not like that. It's very structured. It is a log-on time and I just indicated the time that they have to log on. They will have attendance. The attendance will then return to be a timesheet, which will, we will then use as a backup document for them to get their stipend. And so we also have guest speakers. You guys on the email, on the, on the call should be getting some email within this week and with a calendar. I'm sorry, I said guys, not only guys, females, sorry, elected officials. We'll get a email indicating the time and day that we would like for you to zoom in and speak to our young people. That is being developed as, as we speak. And you should be getting that this week. So we also have a component in the, in the six weeks where they will learn financial literacy. They also have homework, even though it's youth employment, to watch certain TED Talks, YouTube videos, and have like takeaway. They will also have initiatives where they have to do volunteering initiative, for example, teaming up with the recreation where they will help with bagging the food or distribution or community gardening. They will also have a project at the end, in the end of the fifth or the sixth week, where they have to produce something as a tangible evidence of something that they have learned throughout the six weeks. I say all of that to say, again, it's not them just logging on and decided to just come when they want to willy-nilly. They will have an exit ticket. And each day their exit ticket will indicate that they completed and did something for them to earn a stipend at the end of that six weeks. I pretty much summed it all up. Is there any questions? Hello?
I don't, yeah, we're all here. I don't see any questions. I can tell by the looks on the councilmen's and councilwoman's faces that we're just thrilled with the work that you're doing. It's always a pleasure hearing all of the stuff that we've done in the Youth Bureau. I will never forget the time when there was some scandal, a rare scandal going on in City Hall. And reporters were here and they wanted to hear about the scandal, but they just totally ignored the hundreds of youth that were out front for the summer youth program. And they just didn't want to cover it. And I say this all the time, you guys do a wonderful job, whether, no matter where the kids are around the city, we get compliments about it all the time. I want to thank you for breaking down what you're going to be doing this summer. Because it, it is a question, how do you administer children that are dispersed around the city without having a plan in place? And there's a lot of things that you guys can do through Zoom and through training classes. So I mean, I really appreciate all the work that you guys do for the hundreds of students that need to do over this summer program. It's quite simply delightful. I'm sure the other councilors, councilmembers have something to say. And, and as you know, for me, I'd be more than happy to come into a Zoom to talk to the students at, at any time. If I don't respond right away, basically get, get the clerk to track me down so I can get that done. But I would be delighted.
I definitely know how to truck, track you down. I think I've done it numerous times.
I apologize for that, but you know, I'm always grateful when you come running after me, so.
No, you've been great. You're always handing out, lending a helping hand. So I appreciate that.
Thank you so much. Anybody else from the council have anything?
I, I also want to add that thinking out of the box and doing a virtual summer employment is the first in Westchester County. And because it's the first, it is getting a lot of airway and wave. And we were recently, since this month, interviewed by Channel 12 News and Fox 5 have been approached from White Plains and Orange County. And for them to figure out how they could, not patent this, but to take some ideas and how they could implement this. So I might have to talk to my mayor, how do I patent this? So I might have to talk to my mayor, how do I patent this? We are first.
We are.
But it's it's really exciting, and parents are actually pleased to know that their child will actually do something constructive and educational during the summer. And even though it's, people are saying that they're zoomed out, it, that's not the case when it comes to Youth Bureau and Youth Employment, because if that was the case, we would not exceed our goal for one twenty-five, and we're actually at one twenty-nine. So that speaks volume.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Councilwoman Duarte?
I just wanna say again, kudos to Ms. Burrell and the whole Youth Bureau Department. Mount Vernon Youth Bureau has been leading the way for Westchester County for years, and you just continue to exemplify the excellence and the creativity that you have displayed. So thank you so much, and thank you to the whole team. I know Dina, Dina Williams and and the whole team. You guys are really doing a fantastic job.
Definitely. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Madam Mayor, anything?
No, I I just definitely wanna thank our executive director for and her team for the incredible work that they've done. It could have been easy just to say, we're experiencing COVID, we can't do what we traditionally do and just do away with the summer youth employment program, but they found solutions, innovations. Debbie, did you let them know that you're giving the participants tablets so that they can participate in this program?
Right. I did not mention that. They, yes. So they're on for participants who are having, yes, they will be receiving tablets for a participant who unfortunately don't have a tablet or a computer at home to complete the six weeks. We will provide them a computer throughout the six weeks for, so they could be successful in completing it and receive their stipend.
I mean, that's just going above and beyond, and you know, I I think it's important to say that. So thank you so much, Director Burrell Butler.
You're welcome, Mayor.
For always going above and beyond the call of duty to ensure that our young people here in the city of Mount Vernon are served in a dynamic way.
Thank you, Mayor. It's always a pleasure looking up to a leader like you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Stop, stop. You already have your job.
I love it.
All right. So we're gonna move on.
Any other comment? Question?
Anybody? Councilwoman Ferguson, you good? Okay. All right. Thank you, Debbie. We'll see you soon.
Thank you for having me. Have a blessed one, everyone. Bye.
You too.
The birds chirping in your yard sound great. I know. All right. Anything else on the agenda that we have to do before we go to our referrals? Mr. Clerk? Okay. Who usually goes first? Which committee, I should say? Sorry?
I usually go first, LPW.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Item number, item number four and number six I'm calling for, I'd like to actually come back and talk to, talk about it because it relates to our block parties and outdoor events. We just had the presentation from the Chamber of Commerce. That's item fourteen. I'll call for it. Item number thirty is on the agenda. Item thirty-one is on the agenda. Item thirty-two is on the agenda. Item thirty-three is on the agenda. Item thirty-four is on the agenda. Item forty-three pertains to the safety upgrades in the clerk's office, which I don't know if anyone, everyone has had the opportunity to go there. They have temporary barriers for protection, but hopefully that will be upgraded at some point to some more permanent solution. But for right now, it's it's working. So I'm still gonna call for that. Item forty-three, calling for that. Item forty-five, forty-six, and forty-seven are called for, and item forty-nine is for information. And I have one add-on. An add-on that came in this afternoon from Law Department, and I'd like that on the agenda. And.
What was the add-on for? I'm sorry?
Yeah, it was requesting to add chapter two hundred and sixty-eight to the code regarding outside counsel.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Councilwoman, sorry, would you please go from forty-three to forty-nine again for me?
Yes, forty-three, forty-five, forty-six, and forty-seven are called for. Forty-nine is for information.
And fourteen, M fourteen, Councilwoman, can you repeat that one for me, please?
Yes, so fourteen is called for. Four, six, and fourteen are called for.
Thank you.
Okay, public safety and codes?
I'm sorry, before you go ahead, so Acting President Griffith, once we go through all the referrals, could we come back and have an extended discussion on on the block parties as well as the Board of Ethics?
Yes, public safety and code.
Yes.
Yes, public safety and codes, please?
Oh, I thought it was HR.
No, I said public safety and codes.
Okay, that's not, that's not the method we usually go through, so.
Sorry, I'm just going down the page.
All right. Thank you, President Protam. So item number one is called for. Item number seven is, I'm sorry, number two is called for. Item number nine, which is the Amani Charter School wanting to do, to do recess in the streets. So I don't know if the police has weighed in on this. So I'm gonna call for this and ask for like a review on the impact. Deputy Clerk, would you ask the Police Department to weigh in on this matter, please? I've gotten some response on the Charter Commission from Legislative Aid Good Site, but I'm still waiting for the council, so we're gonna call for sixteen and seventeen. Items eighteen is for information. Item nineteen is for information. It's already enacted. Item twenty-eight was already enacted. It's for information. Items twenty-nine is for information. Items forty-two is called for. Item forty-four is, I'm wondering Corporation Counsel, when we might get some kind of legal review of that matter?
So I I talked to my assistant Corporation Counsel, who's been working on that. If I'm not mistaken, I think he said it was near completion, so if you don't mind, maybe we could get it on for the July meeting, because I know you want it in a packet.
That's fine. Thank you so much. And then for the 5G, I don't, I see that's not on here. And I know that.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
That's all right. Go ahead. I'm listening.
Brenda Gears told me this morning that she she had prepared it.
Yeah, but so I was expecting to see it on here. So so I'd like to add it on, please.
Okay.
Thank you, Corporation Counsel.
You're welcome, madam.
And that completes my referral, President Protam.
So for the 5G legislation that you're speaking to, is that the state?
No, no. This is the one that calls for New York State or supports New York State's position to call for a study into the 5G. So New York State Legislature has already looked, is already looking into that. And so our legislation would support their position on that.
And that was in our package, was it not?
Yes, it was. Well, it should have been, yeah. I sent two letters. The first one was on the on the last agenda, but this one should be the correct one. Thank you.
Madam Councilwoman, seventeen was also, was an I or a call for?
Seventeen. Seventeen is called for. That's the the.
That's the Charter Review Commission. And twenty-eight and twenty-nine, can you repeat your designation?
Which one? Eighteen? So eighteen is for information. Eighteen through twenty-nine is for information.
Thank you, ma'am.
And President Protam, if I may, there was one other. I, a couple of weeks ago, I asked that the Tree Ordinance Committee be given an audience in terms of, you know, presenting, because the document is finished, you know, the the policy is done. And so it's just for review for us to as a body, review it and have them present on it. But I noticed they were not given the opportunity to present at any of the meetings. So I would like to ask again, and I'll re-send the email, that they've granted the opportunity to present to the council on the, you know, the work that they've done, the important work that they've done on this tree ordinance, so we can, you know, move forward with. And you, you know, you know, you are an integral part of it, President Protam, of the work that was done on this tree ordinance.
So if the document is not complete, why don't they submit the document for our review?
I think they want to present, they want to, you know, they want to present it. The document is, and that's what I've asked them to do, is to present it to the clerk. So I'll restate that in an email.
Right. I think it, I think it would be good for them to re-present it, let the entire council review it as a fresh, even myself, I haven't read it in some time.
Right. And it's the complete document.
And then once we can gel it, because it's a lot to read, get our questions together, have them come come before us, and we can discuss what needs to be done from there. So yes, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Human resource.
I'm sorry, before we move along, Councilwoman Ferguson, forty-four was, what was the code for that? I'm sorry.
Oh, forty-four. Okay, forty-four is gonna be called for, because it's not done yet. Thank you.
Thank you. I didn't get that. I'm sorry. Thank you. Protam, I have four on my agenda here. Thirty-six is on the agenda. Thirty-seven is on the agenda. Thirty-eight and thirty-nine are for information. And that's all I have for this evening.
Please, Mark?
Thirty-eight was already enacted.
No, was it? No, no, it's not.
That's not what we did last week?
No. Thirty-eight and thirty-nine are new legislation.
I have to find my book, because I thought this was what we already pushed through for the youth borough. So if we didn't do this one already, it'll be on the agenda.
Thirty-eight and thirty-nine?
Yes, thirty-eight and thirty-nine.
And and I I have a couple of questions on those, actually.
Yeah. Well, just so y'all know, I'm always in support of the youth borough, and they will always be on the agenda.
Nobody questions your support. No one questions your support. Yeah. What I would like to know, though, is I know, you know, the dates on this, it's an abbreviated timeframe. You know, the agreement, there's one, it's for the same agency, Career Visions, and it's an abbreviated timeframe. It's fifteen thousand dollars. I'm wondering what the deliverables are and how are we going to evaluate what's being accomplished? Because I read the document about the twenty students and all of that. So I'm just a little concerned about the deliverables. And I mean, how are we going to evaluate that we're getting good bang for our money, right? Like, like, the children are going to get what they, that they, what they need from a career services perspective. So it's not about support. This is about, you know, outcomes.
Right. Well, I I fully trust our Commissioner Gadsden on spearheading everything and making sure that you know, she's, she always does due diligence with with what goes on with that. So I think you're just worried about accountability on those who are receiving the funds, correct?
No, no, not, not accountability, outcomes. You see, part of it is that, you know, we 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 do a lot of programs. How do we know that the programs we're doing work, right? We need to evaluate to say, how do we know that the program that's been delivered to our children, that pre and post, whatever the evaluation method is, that they have gotten what was intended for them to get? And we need to have evidence of that. So it's not about accountability. This is not about questioning anybody's integrity. This is about evaluating the outcomes and saying, how do we know that the money that we've spent is well-spent because our children have gotten what they needed?
Understood.
Any other questions?
I don't know if you need me to give you clarification on thirty-nine. It's not a program. It's an application. So it's a grant that we applied for, a federal grant that we applied for. And so it's not a program. It's an application that we put in, and thirty-eight is actually a program. So the shortened period of time of thirty-nine makes sense because it is an application that we submitted to the Federal Department of Health and Human Services on behalf of the city of Mount Vernon. So this company provides direct programming as well as technical assistance in grant writing and securing funding. So thirty-nine is actually the fees, the contractual fees for an application, and number thirty-eight is for programming, providing video training programming to the youth. So the timeframe is more for an application, and the longer timeframe is because it is a program.
Okay, perfect. Plan some planning? Sure. Okay, so item number ten is for information. Item three, we are calling for. Item number five, I'd like to come back to. Item seven is for information. Item eight, I'm gonna come back to. The next few items, I believe the rest are for information, actually. Eleven, twelve, thirteen, fifteen, twenty. Twenty-one was enacted. Twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven. Twenty-eight, oh, for information. Forty, forty-one, and forty-eight. I think we need to, well, we intended to have the one of the attorneys for Library Square to come into the meeting today.
I'm sorry, President Protam, you said twenty-eight. There's no twenty-eight.
Right, so yeah. Everything from twenty-two down to the bottom of the page is for information.
All right. Thank you.
So as far as Library Square, item number five, we had intended to have a consultant come in and talk to us about some of the financial aspects of the bond from that application. He had to reschedule to another meeting. But I think we should consider moving on that item sooner than later. So I'm gonna call for that item, and for Mace Contracting, I'm gonna call for that as well. And I think that concludes the meeting for tonight, unless anybody had any questions. Oh, Mr. Johnson, sorry. You have to take yourself off mute, Mr. Johnson. Off mute. Off mute.
What did, what did you say about item number three?
It's so wrong. That was so politically wrong.
No, that's okay. My mother would have enjoyed it. Go ahead. What, what did you say about item number three?
Uh, item three is being called for.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I'm sorry.
She says, what's no part of my politically incorrect gestures. Okay, I'm sorry. Councilwoman Duarte?
I'm sorry. Item number eleven, was that also for information or?
I hope you read that, but that is definitely for information.
I had read that.
Come to, President Protam, if I may, have you contacted or attempted to contact the the controller about this this issue with the title register? Has anyone spoken with her?
If I may, I think everybody tries to contact the controller. I think she is incontactable. Is that a word? I think we. So we, you know, I think we've all tried to reach out to her, whether it be casually, collectively as colleagues. We've written letters, we've placed phone calls, we've left messages. I think we've all gone out of our way to contact her. And she has not responded in some instances. She gives vague responses. We know clearly she gives different definitions of what she needs. Um, we know clearly she gives, um, different definitions of what she needs to complete tasks. Um, which consistently change. Um, and it's, it's become. Boy, I was gonna, uh, use a four-letter word, but it's a show that none of us wanna see or smell. Um, so it's, it's, it's quite ridiculous as what's going on, um, in our city, and it doesn't seem to stop, right? Um, uh, the, the escrow accounts are horrific of what's going on there. We've heard from the title companies, where people are not able to close on their properties without having the proper title documentation. Uh, she is really hampering, um, the progression of our city. And nobody can understand how one individual is able to, um, take so much control over our city. Um, elections have consequences, and it's quite unfortunate. I know all of us have reached out in different ways, and I know, Councilwoman Ferguson, you had some success at some point. And I, I think, I'm, I'm guessing that that's not even what we need any longer. A lot of people in the staff has tried to reach out, we've had some success to some individuals on the staff. And it gets tiring very quickly, so, um, I'm not sure what's going on there. A lot of people had a lot to say about our former control, Controller Maureen Walker. And the, um, bickering that went on between her and former Mayor Davis or any other mayor. But never did those elected officials sue one another or sue, um, to hold up the progress of the city. They always worked things out. Um, we're in a new day. Um, and I really wish our higher elected officials, whether it be the governor, the controller, the AG, the IG, if you have a letter behind your name. Um, or if you are able to abbreviate your name, I wish somebody would come in and assist us. Uh, with what's going on here in the city. I, it's unbelievable, the level of difficulty that we've had. Checks have been not cashed, checks have been rejected from even being accepted. And if they are accepted, it doesn't mean if they're cashed. Um, I have, I've had seniors call me, um, stressed, because they were afraid that the taxes weren't paid. Um, and I can say that we've, um, found ways to convince her to skip the pile and get down to. Mrs. Jones's check, so that it could be deposited, so Mrs. Jones's, but it shouldn't have to be that way. Um, so yes, the answer is yes. I've reached out in many ways and forms, and I was unsuccessful every single time.
Uh, I just wanna say that the Law Department, um, I also reached out, because obviously I'm concerned, I don't wanna get hit with. A litany of lawsuits, um, I, I know that there was one, and I asked for information about that. Unfortunately, the controller was not willing to give me that information, um, but I did find it, it was, uh, uh, resolved, I was not involved, so.
Another thing that we have to be, um, concerned with as a city is, on July first, the school district will, um, send. Um, each taxpayer their school tax bills. And I suppose that at that same time, the school district is gonna demand from the city. Any amounts owed from the city that belong to the school district. And it's the city's responsibility to then still collect any former taxes that are due for the school system, because they were charged with collecting them. Um, and the school district is gonna lay out a number and probably take the city, not the controller, but the city to court. For the amounts of money that we, as a city, owe the school district and the library subsequent to them as well. So, um, by the negligence and the, um. Mishandling of funds from the controller's offices, not only impacts the city. But it's impacting school district, which could cause interest charges for their entities. And the library as well, who the school district has to fund. Um, it's, it's an ongoing problem, and I just don't know where it's gonna end. Any questions on any of that? Okay, good. Anything else from anybody? Councilwoman Duarte?
Thank you. Um, so I just wanna quickly go back to the, uh, applications for block parties. Um, we still have two, uh, two open.
I apologize, I, I, I failed to remember to go back to that, so thank you.
Yeah, no, no problem. Um. So we currently have two, two applications for us. Um, there have been others that we received early on in the year, um, before really this pandemic. Um, shut everything down, and so those, those have been approved, but they are scheduled to take place either late July or August. Um, I believe it was last week that the county canceled all of their festivals for, um, the remainder of July and August. And I, I would like to put to the council and just get your, uh, feedback, if you believe that we should consider following and doing the same. Um, because if that is the case, we do have some applicants that we approved very early on this year. That have events scheduled, like one for July twenty-fifth, another for August second. Um, there's another for August fifteenth, so I'd like to be able to, um. Either take some action or, or speak to those applicants. Um, to, to perhaps reschedule.
So let me understand correctly, we re-approved them, and you're saying that maybe we should, um, send work to them that they. Are not approved, even though they were approved, and just, is that what you're getting at?
No, so, oh, the applicants that are on the calendar now, these were applications that were approved prior to March, right? We received them early on, uh, we clearly had no indication or knowledge that these things are, that would happen subsequent, um, with the shutdown was, were going to occur. All of these fall under Phase Four, I believe, and we don't really have state guidelines for Phase Four yet. We won't have those until we enter Phase Four, which, you know, we, we had in the presentation from, um, Omar Fields. That is not expected to, uh, take place until early July, July seventh, I believe is the date. So until we have those guidelines, would we really be able to then put, share those with these applicants? Um, so that they can implement measures, appropriate measures to comply with those guidelines. But even with that said, I, uh. The county has already made the decision to cancel those events for the late July and August. They have previously canceled events through mid-July. And last week, they, they announced that they were canceling the remainder of the events, festivals for late July and August. And I'm asking the council if you feel, um, that we should follow suit. And if that's the case, perhaps we need to go back to these applicants and ask that they consider another date. Uh, perhaps in September or, or. Or likewise, so I, I just want your feedback, what you feel would be, um. So we should consider at this time.
Um, I, I think we should just not do anything, I think we should just, um, clearly not, you know, approve any new. Uh, permits, but, you know, the mayor, in her role, gets to override, um, any things that we've approved here. So if it's possible that they open up, um, the mayor, I think, would give the guidance to the organization, whether what they can do or what they can't do at the time, right? Um, and hopefully these organizations will know, or at least scale back, um, how large their events were. But it's quite possible that the mayor just doesn't outright, uh, clear, broad, uh, any approvals for any. Past events are now can't, canceled, and, and then that's that. I mean, I would love for, I mean, I'm looking forward to my Portuguese barbecue, I don't know when it is, but I, I don't think it's gonna happen.
They haven't approved that, no.
Right, so, but it's, it's possible that, um, that we could have a different scale of the event. I, we, we just don't know, so I, I, my recommendation is to do nothing from the ones that we did in the past, and let the mayor's executive orders. Um, take the lead, and quite frankly, I think the mayor's executive orders can, um, facilitate, um, the restaurant. Um, outdoor usage as well, right? And I don't think this council would have any reservations, um, to managed, um, spaces being used for expanded outdoor space. It's part of the executive order. Um, of course, I always like to be asked, but if we absolutely know that the plan is in place, that it's gonna help the local businesses. Um, I think the mayor should just go ahead and, and, and get it done. Of course, consulting with us, but don't hold up the process, uh, because we need to have council meetings, especially with us only having one meeting in July and August. Um, Councilman Thomas, did you have anything?
Oh, no, I was just gonna say that I agree with, um, with Mr. Goodside, said, uh, you know, we're just following the lead of our governor. And, um, making sure that we're, um, you know, just following suit and following protocol of what needs to be done. Um, through the community, and the mayor's been following his lead as well, so. That's all.
I, I think that's wise.
Thank you, um, just, just to, well, one event that just happened in the past, we had a wonderful Juneteenth celebration. And I have a feeling that, um, is gonna continue, um, year after year. Um, I like to tell people when I learn something, I had no clue that there was a Juneteenth flag. Um, and I was very proud to see that the city had one, um, I want one, I want a big one, I wanna fly it next year. So if anybody finds a Juneteenth flag, I'll reimburse you for it. Um, um, our council, our Congressman Elliot Engel was, and he spoke of, uh, John Lewis not being very well. Um, I didn't know that directly, um, but, you know, it, it's just something to say when these living legends that we have in our community. Um, have somebody that they literally talk to and know that can bring back, um, that message to us. Um, so, um, I, I think what we, uh, the right thing to do is to really think about and pray for, um. Congressman Lewis before we close out our meeting, but definitely before that, if anybody had any other comments, uh, before.
I'll, I'll go after Councilwoman Duarte.
Thank you, I'm glad everybody can see everybody. Councilwoman Duarte?
Yeah, I just wanted to also follow up on an email that I sent with regards to appointments for the Board of Ethics. Um, and any thoughts on that, you can certainly respond to me, uh, fine, if you'd like, um, but I would like to get. Um, some of those appointments on the agenda this week, if that's possible. So I just wanted to make, uh, put it out there, I did, no one responded, I don't know if anyone has any questions.
Uh, Councilwoman Ferguson, did you have something?
Co- Corporation Council, it's together.
Yes.
Hi, okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, so, so, so given the, um. I wanna think about this a bit, but given the fact that the Board, the Board of Ethics is, is currently subject to litigation. I'm wondering if we should not arrange for an, this to be had in executive session. Uh, you know, it's a little difficult now with the Zoom and the Facebook Live and everything. But the, the council has to have the ability to go into executive session when it is permitted to do so. And currently, there's, there's a very sensitive matter of litigation, so I'm gonna ask that we reserve that comment. We're gonna take a look at how we can have an executive session, um, and, and, and do that. Um, so that'll require some technological learning on Deputy Clerk Holmes' part, on how we have the separate rooms or whatever. Not to put you on the spot, you know, I'm willing to learn.
We can do it the same way we had our last executive session on Zoom, we.
Oh, you had one, maybe I missed it, I'm sorry. So we know how to do that, is that something we could do now?
You, you were there, we did it the last time with the, with the first reading of the local law, in that, in that meeting.
Oh, okay, I, I, I don't recall. Okay, so if you wanted to continue the discussion and somebody would make a motion, and we could do that, then that, then that would be fine.
Um, i- i- if, if it's okay, ma'am, President Protem, the two matters that I had to discuss. Don't require executive session, and then we could just do executive session and leave after that, if that's okay.
Absolutely, and I don't know.
Well, there are two things, one, and it may, but the add-on for, for outside counsel. I had some questions and concerns about that, um, legislation, so I don't know where you wanna discuss that, but I'll just let you know that I have concerns about that. The second is regarding a letter that I sent, and now we know that Governor Cuomo has issued clear directives to municipalities. Police, um, agencies and community leaders. To say we must reimagine, reform and transform public safety and police departments for the future. It, it, based on what's going on, and unfortunately, we are not immune. We have had incidents recently that demonstrate that, you know, as, as, um. Inoculated as, as we feel we may be, as cocooned as we think we may be as a small city, we're not immune, and we have some issues to address. So I did send a letter to the, um, deputy clerk, and I emailed it to all of you separately, but I wanted it to be on the agenda for the next agenda. To talk about how we start to formulate a plan, to reimagine what public safety will look like. So I'm inviting all your participation in this. What I'd like to do is to convene a series of public forums to talk about this, to engage the community, and we can do this. This format as, you know, and whatever other format you, you think is appropriate, but to really engage the community. In what do they think, how do they think we should reimagine our police department? What are the specific needs in this community, whether it's housing, whether it's. Education, because it's all connected, right? Our safety is all connected to all of those things, um, domestic violence, the, you know, large incidence of homelessness, whatever the, the issues are in our community. So I'd like to, um, I sent that letter, I'd like to have your input and your participation in, in that. So we can really have a robust discussion and, and formulate a plan that we could submit on behalf of our city. To Governor Cuomo and to the state legislator, to say, this is what Mount Vernon is proposing. And I really do want to do it as like a white paper, like some, you know, something that we can really document abstract, do all of that, you know. And, and present it to, to, to the state on, on the behalf of our community.
Um, another, another thing about the Juneteenth ceremony, um, is that, um, uh. Council President, um, Copeland, um, presented the Juneteenth legislation that will be on the agenda on Wednesday to Councilman Yana Edwards. Um, and what's so interesting is that these two critical things that are going on in the country. Uh, the police brutality in Juneteenth, were two issues. Councilman Yana Edwards had been working on and working on and working on years prior, right? So the Civilian Police Review Complaint Board was almost one hundred percent Yana's wanting. And his celebration of Juneteenth was way before we were doing it here. So I think it may be an opportunity to have a former council member come back and just go over his thought process. Because he was way ahead of us on this, and this is so prominent as the things we need to do right now. And Councilwoman Ferguson, you're, you're correct in what you said.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, I think that's a great idea, and as a former council member, um, who's still very active in our community. I think his participation and input would be invaluable, so I totally agree.
Thank you, and, uh, twenty-one votes ahead, Councilman Thompson, what do you have to say?
Oh, no, I'm total agreeance, I can't wait to, um, you know, put some legislation forth and do some great work together. As the body of the council, so let's get it done.
Very good, very good. Anything else by anybody? So let's just, let's just remember our Congress, put in our prayers, I'm sure that a lot of this election day tomorrow, uh, please everybody go out in hopes. Um, but you still have time, tomorrow is the finish before.
You've gone, you've gone, gone mute.
Um, Holmes, you have to mute, you have to mute it so we can hear, um.
Yes, yes, yes.
Clearly, there you go, you're good.
Is that better?
Much better.
All right, so I was just saying that, uh, actually I forgot what I was saying, uh, but we should think about.
And remember, Lois.
Congressman John Lewis, and, oh, voting, um, tomorrow's election day, totally different election process than we've had in the past. Um, you can still vote, uh, by mail absentee vote, as long as it's postmarked by tomorrow night. Uh, we have very few polling places, it is not the normal, uh, polling place that you've had in the past. I think we only have eleven polling places in the entire city, so, uh, it moves you to get that mail out to the post office. As long as it is postmarked by tomorrow, you would have voted. Um, if not, um, before you leave your house, go and check to see what those polling places are. Um, the polling place that you may have had before may not be the same, so check that.
The website also.
And check the website. With the list of closed polling sites, or more importantly, the open, uh, polling sites. Um, so, uh, thank you, everybody, I think we had a good meeting, I'll see you all Wednesday, thank you and good night.
We're not, we're not done, I thought we were going into executive session. I thought we were going into executive session.
Who are we doing?
Are you gonna move it?
I, I moved to go into executive session.
Is there a second? I don't know if we really need to, is there a need to go into executive session?
He said he wanted to talk about, um, co- Corporation Council.
Well, I mean, no, I, I, I just made the recommendation something to consider, it doesn't have to be. I don't know what, what you intend on saying, but if you're gonna talk anything about the current lawsuits. I don't know what, what you intend on saying, but if you're going to talk anything about the current lawsuit filed by the Controller against the Board of Ethics specifically, then that would have to be in executive session. If you want to talk about the Board of Ethics generally, then that's fine.
Right, I, I think, right, Council, um, Co-Chair, um, Chairperson Duarte just wanted to talk about, um, appointing a couple of members, right?
Okay, okay.
So, uh.
I wasn't, I wasn't sure at Corporation Council if you were just bunching it all together into one error, if there was anything about that particular matter that you wanted to discuss with us.
No, I just, I, I just wanted to err on the greater side of caution.
Very good, so I just, I just wanted to discuss the vacancies, um, and the email that I sent, uh, to see if there is any, uh, who can agree to a couple of the appointments that we could get onto the agenda this week.
If I may, um, may I suggest that we review those and have separate discussions? And then on Wednesday, maybe before our meeting starts, we have a quick executive session and then possibly appoint people then. Uh, I'm not really ready to discuss individuals today. Um, I do think we need to appoint, um, but I'm not sure if I'm ready to discuss that tonight. And I'm not sure of the will of the rest of you. And we also don't have Madam President here. And so I'm, it's, it's my suggestion that we kind of, um, discuss that separately and maybe come to a conclusion on that before our meeting on Wednesday.
I, I'm fine with that, the, the only, uh, I'd like to at least give some time for the Law Department to prepare the legislation, um, with, with that. So I'm happy to have the discussions offline, but again, I, I did send an email out last week. Um, and so I just wanted to bring it up to everyone so that we can, uh, we can discuss it and hopefully get the information to our Law Department in time.
Maybe the legislation is prepared with blanks, so we can.
That's a, that's a great mindset, that's what I was thinking too.
Was a motion, is, was there a second?
You're going to executive? No, I, I, I would, well, do we need to go into executive, because I can withdraw my motion?
And there was no second.
Good, so you withdraw now?
I, I withdraw the motion to go into executive session, thank you.
Excellent, is there anything else?
No, that's it.
I'm pushing the end button.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Bye, good meeting.